Please ask you to join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First on our agenda this evening is the approval of several, of just one set of minutes. Is there a motion to approve the May 23 public hearing minutes?
So moot.
Discussion on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that motion carries. I'm pleased we have a couple of proclamations this evening that I'm really proud of. The first one is a proclamation to recognize the 275th anniversary of the Fairfax County government. And I will recognize Councilmember Cunningham to read the proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A Town of Herndon proclamation recognizing the 275th anniversary of the Fairfax County government. Fairfax County was formed in 1742 from a northern part of Prince William County, was named for Thomas Fairfax, sixth Lord of Fairfax of Cameron, proprietor of the Northern Neck. In many ways, the recorded history of Fairfax County is a reflection of the history of the United States. Familiar Fairfax County names and places such as George Washington, George Mason, Mount Vernon, Bull Run, and Washington Dulles International Airport have played or continue to play important roles in the lives of all Americans. With its proximity to the seat of the federal government, Fairfax County has drawn people from all over our nation and from around the world. The federal government's rapid growth during and after World War II spurred growth in the county and large businesses settled in Fairfax County. And the technology boom and a steady government-driven economy created rapid growth and increasingly growing and diverse population. Therefore, the mayor and the town council of the Town of Herndon, Virginia hereby proclaim and celebrate the 275th anniversary of the Fairfax County government, encourage all town and county residents to attend the historically Fairfax event on the grounds of the Fairfax County courthouse on June 17, 2017, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and recognize the years of planning that it took county staff and members of the community to create this event. At historically Fairfax, there will be a number of lectures and events for the public to enjoy, all free of charge. Further, the mayor and the town council of the Town of Herndon, Virginia hereby recognize that throughout the year, groups across the county will be hosting their own celebrations of our history and encourage, and we encourage our residents to take part in these events. Various county agencies and organizations will also celebrate important milestones in 2017, including the sheriff's 275th anniversary and the health department's 100th anniversary, just to name a few. Further, the mayor and the town council of the Town of Herndon hereby welcome Nicholas Fairfax, Lord Fairfax of Cameron, with his wife, Lady Annabelle Fairfax, who will be traveling from England to commemorate the 275th anniversary of the Fairfax County government. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. Comments from council?
Thank you. It's a real privilege to read this proclamation tonight. Fairfax County is one of the few places, Virginia in general and Fairfax County in particular, has got some great history. And really, the history of our neighborhoods are the history of America. So take a moment and reflect on the reasons why our ancestors immigrated to the United States and think about what we will do to continue to include people and welcome people to our shores and continue to make America great. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from council? Mr. McKenna.
Just real briefly, I'm a transplant. I mean, a lot of people here are transplants as well, and coming to Fairfax County has been a blessing to me in many ways, just services and 275 years ago, I don't think that they saw that we would have the fifth largest school district in the country. They wouldn't see the growth that we have and the amount of prosperity that we have. And it's a lot of because of the management and the people that live there. So here's to another 275 more years.
Thank you. Other comments from council? Well, one of the great things about being in the Town of Herndon is that we are part of Fairfax County. It definitely contributes to our economic growth and our stature throughout the nation. And my colleagues have summarized the history beautifully. We're thrilled to be a part of Fairfax County, appreciate the partnership that we have developed over the years, not only with the Board of Supervisors and Chairman Bulva, but also with Visit Fairfax and the other organizations that promote Fairfax County, because doing that elevates and promotes the Town of Herndon, and so we thank you for that partnership. We have several people who are here this evening. Chairman Bulva from the Fairfax County Board of Supervisors was unable to be here due to a prior commitment, but she wanted to make sure that I expressed her gratitude for the proclamation and that she wished she could be here. Is Supervisor John Faust here? He was tentative, and I think he may have gotten hung up at another meeting. So I would like to invite down, we have several people from other agencies in Fairfax County, Barry Biggar, who's the president and CEO of Visit Fairfax, Patrick Lennon, who's the director of marketing, and Heather Ballinger, who has the astute job of being the 275th anniversary steering committee chair, I believe. And I'd like to invite, are you at the chair? Well, she's been, look at her, she's like, no, that's not me. But she has played a role in that steering committee, and we'd like to invite each of you down if you'd like to say a few words before the presentation. And I'm sorry, I missed someone. I apologize.
I'm Mary Lipsy. I'm on the steering committee also.
Oh, thank you for being here. I apologize.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, Acting Bell Manager Ashton, we are really very delighted to be here. I really don't think there's anything more to be said, because I think Councilman Cunningham said it so very, very well. But we are really very delighted and honored that the Town of Herndon is recognizing the 275th today by way of the proclamation. And Madam Mayor, you said it exceptionally well, as did you, Councilman McKenna. This is an amazing county. It is an amazing place. 275 years has transpired, and there is no question in my mind, 275 more will. And if any of us are around to see that, God bless you, because you've obviously been blessed. But many more changes will come about. I had the privilege today of picking up Lord and Lady Fairfax at the airport. When they arrived, they were truly very happy and very honored to have been invited to celebrate with the county, all of its residents, and every part of it with them. They just expressed to me such joy to be back, because they were here for the 250th. And Lord and Lady Fairfax will have five very, very busy days, of which they will certainly go and do DC. But I am very happy to say that that is only half a day of their entire itinerary. The balance will be here in Fairfax County. We again thank you so very much. This celebration is a year-long celebration. It is a celebration that I truly believe every resident who lives here and who has lived here should come together in unison to truly celebrate this remarkable place we all call home. And similar to you, Councilman, I am a transplant, actually a real transplant, Canadian by birth, but American by choice. I am an American citizen. And of all the places I have lived in this great country of the United States of America, and I've lived in a few states, without question, the Commonwealth has been the very best. And this county will remain home for the rest of our days. So thank you. Not only should the residents enjoy this, but we're hoping throughout the year that many visitors come, stay in Herndon, in the hotels, eat in your restaurant, shop in your shops, and really make an impact for this year and the future. So again, thank you all very, very much. And I'm going to turn it over to the ones you really want to hear from, the lovely ladies. And then Patrick.
Thank you, Barry. You never want to be the person to follow Barry when you're speaking publicly, but I would, on behalf of the committee and the county, like to thank you for this public acknowledgement of the 275th. And we are throwing a big old birthday party this coming Saturday, so we look forward to seeing you all there if possible. It's going to be a day filled with family-friendly activities. We have four entertainment areas, and we're just really going to be celebrating the diverse and beautiful history of our county. And with that, I'd just like to pass it along to Heather to talk about some events that are happening in the historic courthouse.
Heather, I didn't mean to give you a promotion like that.
That's okay.
Sorry to terrify you.
No, I'm just, I'm part of the steering committee, and I'm currently running the Facebook page, so that's a, that's a big job, but I'm happy to do it. So yeah, so we're going to be having several talking events in the courthouse on the day of the celebration, on June 17. We also have a variety of other opportunities for people to celebrate Fairfax County's history this entire year, so I'm going to shamelessly plug those now, so that everybody can hear.
So that thousands of people at home can hear all about it.
Yes. So we do have monthly lectures that are happening at the courthouse, once a month. The next one is on June 20. We will study George Mason University Health and Education in Fairfax County, where Mary Lipsy will be talking about education in Fairfax County. That's on June 20. And then the party will not stop with the birthday celebration this weekend. We are having, if you have not heard yet, Fairfax, The History of Fairfax the Musical, which is being written by Chairman Bulva's grandson, Sharon Bulva's son, or Gretchen Bulva's son. And the first showings of that are July 7 and 8. It is a custom, brand-new musical. It is going to feature scenes from all the magisterial districts. Herndon's scene is going to feature the tragic story of Sadie the Cow. So we will see, that is what I've, that is what I've been told.
We'll have to tune in and find out about Sadie.
So they'll be at the James Lee Center, July 7, 8, and 9, and then at Workhouse Art Center, July 13, 14, and 15. And then in September, we'll have Fall for the Book, where Hugh Fairfax, Nicholas Fairfax's brother, will be coming to speak. He's writing a book on the Fairfax family. So those are all things that are happening this year for the 275th celebration. So again, we thank you so much for your time and for, you know, supporting the county's anniversary. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mary Lipsy, and I'm a native of Fairfax County and a retired Fairfax County schoolteacher. And so my goal has been the educational part of this. Besides children's activities, on our website, we have an educators' corner. We're encouraging all teachers to look at resources to teach local history, how to celebrate the birthday, et cetera. And one goal that I have, which I don't think I've reached yet, but I would like every student in Fairfax County to know that we're older than the United States of America, and that we should be very proud of our heritage. And it's a diverse community that has made it. We have a wonderful place to live, and everybody asks, when my husband retires, where are we moving? And I said, is that a requirement? Because I'm a Fairfax County native, and like Barry said, I hope to be here for the rest of my life. So please come out on June 17, enjoy the time, and then celebrate for the rest of the year.
Thank you. Well, don't go anywhere quite yet. I'd like to invite down our delegate from the 86th District, Delegate Jennifer Boyzko is here. She'd like to say a few words, and then we'll invite everyone down for the presentation.
Thank you so much. I'm Delegate Jennifer Boyzko. I represent Herndon, Fairfax County, and parts, a very small part of Loudoun County. And as your representative from the House of Delegates, the predecessors who the House of Burgesses actually created Fairfax County, and I just want to say congratulations. Thank you all for recognizing Fairfax County. It's a wonderful place to live, and you all just talked about all the wonderful things that we have in this community, and it's just my pleasure to be here to celebrate with you all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I see Supervisor Faust has just entered the building. Supervisor Faust, nothing like a big entrance. Would you like to come down and talk about Fairfax County? Come on down, we were waiting for you.
Sorry, we had a, many, many meetings at the board today, but I did want to be here. I wanted to thank you for recognizing Fairfax County's 275th. Hopefully, everyone has gotten a copy of the list, the long list of events that will be occurring. We've got the real Lord and Lady Fairfax coming to help us celebrate. I think that's next Saturday. And just generally, it's, it's just amazing to be, to look back on such an amazing history, and it's where we're at. And of course, Herndon's got its own history, and it's just, just a good time to be living in Fairfax County. So thank you for recognizing this important date. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir.
And thanks for waiting for me.
Well, I would like to invite down the entire dais and all of our guests here for the presentation.
Here we go. I'm going to sit between two lovely ladies, if you don't mind, and you can hang onto that. How's that sound?
Everybody look this way. Everybody look. Everybody look. Everybody smile. Keep smiling. Please.
Thank you so much. 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 Thank you so much.
Any comments?
Just what the proclamation says, Herndon is a place for everyone and we mean everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Mr. McKenna.
I had great pleasure of having a newspaper shop for seventeen years of my life and I came in contact with many different people from many different walks of life. And I also grew up as an Irish Catholic kid and my father and mother instilled in me time after time, you know, as far as, I remember my father being, saying outside of the birth of my sister, myself and marrying my mom, John F. Kennedy winning his presidency of the United States was a very big deal to him because it was a, it was a realization that the Irish had made it. And my father said never, you know, because of that, you know, we've been fortunate as a family and we should be looking back and helping those because it was my grandparents who's, you know, when he said, "Help wanted, Irish need not apply." And so it was instilled with me, and I was thirteen years old and I learned about the Stonewall Inn, nineteen sixty-nine, from my parents talking about these things. And, you know, my parents also instilled in me the idea that the United States is the only country in the world where it's not based on ethnicity, it's not based on race, it's not based on sexual orientation, it's based on an idea. The idea is that we're all created equal. The Declaration of Independence is the heart of this country and the Constitution is the soul. We have to remember that, time in and time out. And even though there have been transgressions and things that have happened, we still have to move ahead. And, you know, I take the Pledge of Allegiance very seriously and hopefully one day, you know, with liberty and justice for all, you know, will really truly mean something. And we have to work hard every day at that. So you have my commitment to do that because it does matter and I thank you for the proclamation.
Thank you. Ms. Cunningham.
On one hand, it's wonderful that we're able to recognize all members of our community with proclamations. On the other hand, I look forward to the day when we'll never need to do that, or it's just regular. We don't talk about Asian Americans, or Black Americans, or disabled Americans, or LGBT Americans, they're just Americans. So, that's my hope. In the meantime, we'll continue to recognize all of our, all of our contributing members of our society. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just gonna go right on down. Vice Mayor Baker.
Sure. So I remember in high school, having a conversation with my Methodist pastor about gay people, because he believed it was a choice and I didn't. So I asked him, "Why would anyone choose to be persecuted and discriminated against?" So we had a lengthy conversation about it and I walked away more convinced than ever that sexual orientation and identity are gifts that we are born with. As a country, we have made great progress, but there is still so much more to do. It's been less than six years since men and women serving in the military could do so without the risk of losing their jobs if they were open about their sexual orientation. It's been less than two years that same-sex couples, same-sex couples have had the right to get married in all fifty states. There is currently no federal law to prevent housing discrimination, or prevent employment discrimination in many others. So while we wait for the federal government to catch up, which may take longer than we want, given our current situation, over twenty states and multiple cities and counties have enacted legislation to make sure employers and landlords can't deny LGBT individuals. There are still many states, including Virginia, where some of our legislators are advocating for laws that would allow our LGBT friends and neighbors to be discriminated against. Only a few months ago, as I look at my delegate in the audience, our Virginia Assembly passed a law similar to North Carolina's much-maligned bathroom bill. Of course, our delegate voted against that, I want to acknowledge. And luckily, this was vetoed by Governor McCullough. However, in 2012, Virginia did pass a law that allows adoption agencies to refuse adoptions for religious reasons. And too often, we've seen people with strong religious convictions feel entitled to impose their morality and their religion on others, which often includes denying rights to LGBT individuals. I agree with Jesse Ventura, who said morality is not absolute. And Steve Simon, who was in the Minnesota House of Representatives in 2011, when Minnesota was also wrestling with some of these types of laws, and to kind of take it full circle, related to what my pastor talked about, he said, "How many more gay people does God have to create before we ask ourselves whether or not God actually wants them around?" I'll end with President Obama, a quote from President Obama, who said, "Let us each, let each of us speak for tolerance, justice, and dignity, because if hearts and minds continue to change, over time, laws will too." This is why I'm so proud of Herndon tonight, as we acknowledge and celebrate our LGBT community. All of us need to continue to stand together for the rights of all of our citizens in Herndon. Thank you.
Yes ma'am.
Thank you. I remember the first time we gave this proclamation, this place was packed. And the testimony we had from all the individuals that came in, that were, they just felt so accepted. And yet, for years in Herndon, we have had, the LGBT community has been so active. Why wouldn't we accept everyone there? So I am very proud of my colleagues that took that step several years ago, and that we continue to recognize the people that make Herndon this homey, colorful place, because every time I turn around, I see a yard of the month, or a yard on the garden tour, or a home on our home tour, that one of our LGBT community is taking part in. So it is part of our community, but we just want to make sure you feel the love. And we're glad you're all here. Thank you.
Ms. Friedrichs.
So in nineteen seventy-seven, I would never have imagined we would experience what we're experiencing now, when I was in the hospital with my best friend, wondering why she was being admitted, and why she, we wouldn't see her for a month. And now she is married and she has a little boy, and her wife is just an exciting and happy and wonderful person, and so is she. I am so happy that we can be where we are now, and I'm hoping that more children will not experience what she experienced and what we all experienced as her friends. We love our friends and we don't want anything to happen to them. We want you to feel good about yourself and we really, really are grateful for all that you provide to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, when you go last, there's not a lot left to say, but I do want to say that I am so pleased to present this proclamation once again. I'm pleased that our entire council is here this evening for this proclamation. Herndon is a hometown for everyone. Almost everyone in the audience out there today actually lives in the town of Herndon, which is pretty incredible. That's not always the case. And those of you that have crossed the border, we're glad you're here too. We, we see you around town a lot. You know, I get, I get asked a lot as the mayor to sign pledges, pledge that we're not going to do this, or we're not going to do that. And I, as a rule, just don't sign pledges, but I have signed one since I have been the mayor of this town. And that was the Mayors' for Marriage Equality, because I thought that is the only pledge anyone has come to me and asked me about, that I thought, there is not a single argument anyone can give me that would make me change my mind on this issue. Several years ago, right after the SCOTUS ruling that we all were waiting on bated breath, and I remember going to Susan and Linda's house right afterwards, and it was such a great day. By total coincidence, my family had a trip planned to San Francisco and San Diego that following weekend, and we were in San Francisco for the, for the Pride Parade, that year of all years. And it was the most joyful occasion that I think I have ever experienced at an event like that. Yet, I do want to acknowledge while we're here that yesterday was the one-year anniversary of the Pulse nightclub massacre, and that was an incredibly upsetting day for so many of us. I had a good friend who I was worried was there. Luckily, he was, he was safe. My first friend to check in on Facebook as safe at an event like that. So I just need to stop talking because I've been going on too long, but I feel so passionately about this, and I am so grateful to each of you that are here, and I'm grateful to the council and the town staff for taking the time to acknowledge this, because I think it is really important. And we are a hometown for everyone, and like Jeff started off and was more succinct than all of us, and said it all in a short sentence, "Herndon is a hometown for everyone and we mean everyone." I would like to invite our delegate to come forward and say a few words. And then we also have representatives here who both live in the town of Herndon, from Nova Pride and from Dulles Triangles, to accept the proclamation. Delegate Boyzko.
Thank you so much. It's my honor to be here today. Equality is something that has been a passion for me for my whole life. I have a very good friend who I actually performed his wedding with his partner of seventeen years in New York City. And, and so it's something that's very personal to me. Vice Mayor Baker was very, I really appreciated that you talked about the legislation that's been offered around the country. I continue to pledge that I will co-sponsor and sponsor every piece of pro-equality legislation that we have, as well as repealing the heinous and hate-filled pieces that come before us. We're very lucky to have a governor who cares passionately about these issues as well. Elections really matter, and this was one of the issues that inspired me to run in, in the very beginning. It's, it's a thrill to see all of you and our town embracing equality for everyone, and I'm just so glad that I get to be a part of this. And I hope everyone knows that I'm a partner. My father's actually an Episcopal priest, and theology has never been an issue for me, because I believe that we are here to love one another. So thank you very much for doing this for everybody in our community and by your leadership. I think you're going to help other people see that it's okay to love everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan or Kyle, would, would you like to come forward and, and say a few words? You certainly don't have to, but we welcome it if you, if you would like.
Thank you. That's what I have to say.
All right, well Susan was short and sweet, but I have a little bit more to say. I tend to be very, quite verbose, but, excuse me, woo, I tend to be quite verbose at times, so if, if I'm getting a little carried away.
We don't know anything about that.
Just let me know.
Maybe you should run for council.
What's that?
Maybe you should run for council.
Maybe, you know, that, that could be fun. So who's going to give it up, mayor? All right.
We can talk.
All right, so I am on the board of Nova Pride, and I also live in Herndon. I've been here seven years. My husband is from here. We met in college in Louisiana. And I'm very glad to be able to be here. And I think I've said this every year, how heartwarming it is to live in a town that is as, as accepting as Herndon, which is such a departure from where I'm from, in deep south Louisiana. But I'm not really here to talk about myself, or really even talk about Nova Pride tonight. I want to recognize people who have come before us in the fight for LGBT equality. I want to start with, woo, excuse me, Del Martin and Phyllis Leon, who formed the Daughters of Belitis. The, they were a lesbian organization in the fifties and sixties, and they ran the first lesbian-oriented publication in this country. And I also want to recognize Marsha P. Johnson, who is a Black trans woman, and Sylvia Rivera, who was a Latina trans woman. They threw the first bricks at Stonewall, which led to us having these, these discussions, being able to be here today. I want to recognize Peter Staley, who was one of the founding members of ACT UP in the eighties, which fought for advancements in HIV and AIDS research. I want to thank, I want to, I want to bring up Ruby Carrato, who runs Casa Ruby in DC, for all of the hard work that she has done as a Latina trans woman, for the, for the homeless population in, in DC. I want to thank everybody who is here tonight, our esteemed council, our wonderful mayor, all of our representatives from Dulles Triangles, my amazing husband sitting back there. And I just want to say thank you. And to wrap up, I want to quote Lin-Manuel Miranda, "Love is love, is love, is love, is love, is love, is love, is love." And thank you all.
Well, I would like to invite anyone in the audience that would like to come down for this proclamation and the entire dais, and of course, Linda, I mean, I'm sorry, Susan, Linda's your other half, and Kyle to come forward on behalf of the organizations to accept the proclamations.
Everybody angled this way, this way.
Next, we have a couple of yard of the months to, to recognize, and we have Turan Shatman is here, somewhere back there.
Good evening. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Miss Mayor, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the council. I'm Turan Shatman. I'm here on behalf of CCI, which is the Cultivating Community Initiative. We have about six or seven programs per year, which would be the Holiday Home Tours, Garden Tour, Good Neighbor, Yard of the Month, and dressing up the Herndon, which is around the Christmas time. The Yard of the Month, which I am the chairperson for this particular one, we usually have yards nominated by a nominator, and perhaps the yard owners. And we have judges, which they will look at the yards, and we have a criteria for them accordingly, to judge the yards. For this month, which the deadline was the May fifteenth, we had nine nomination. And out of nine nomination, we had, actually happened to have two category, which is the single-family homes and townhouse. So I would like to introduce the winner and the location of the yards, and I believe we might have pictures that...
I don't know. Okay, I'm sorry. I don't know about pictures.
Okay. We'd like to put that on the monitor, so you can see the yards for itself. Meanwhile, I would like to mention the yard, one zero zero one Sabre Lane, which belongs to Mrs. Angela Jimenez, which is a townhouse. And we have the town of, Yard of the Month of Herndon, six five four Old Huntway, which belongs to Rob and Julie Nerschel. I believe Julie is going to join us with Angela, but I believe Rob could not make it. And he said thank you very much ahead of time. And as you all know, I'm sure you all have experience to take care of your yards, and you know how tedious and how much time it needs to take care of your yard to make it beautiful. And the part of beauty is that they are committed to make the town of Herndon beautiful. So I'd like to ask Madam Mayor to come for presentation, and Julie, and Angela. Also, I would like to mention that Meadows Farm is sponsoring us, and they are giving a thirty dollars gift card to the winners.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Yes.
I've seen it before, it's lovely.
The yard owners will actually put these signs on their yard for the whole month.
The green thumb.
Yes, the green thumb.
It's a hometown, guys.
Right.
Hold on.
Thirty dollars.
Thank you very much.
Yes, and there we go. Thank you.
We will have another one, which the deadline would be June fifteen. And I'll see you later, next month. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Okay, this brings us to, to comments. Mr. Town Manager, do you have any comments for us?
Nothing this evening, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Mr. Davidson.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to remind everyone and everybody watching on TV that June twenty-fourth at the Warrenton Airport is Women Can Fly Day. There'll be all kinds of events held by the FAA, by the local flight schools, be free rides for women, trying to get people, more people into the air, and we look forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McKenna.
Thank you. There's a couple of things. First, I want to thank the mayor, council, and staff for my appointments at Virginia Municipal League, for the General Laws and Policy Committee, and their purpose is to present official positions of the Virginia Municipal League to the legislature, so I'm very excited about that, so we can help Ms. Boyzko in regards to her hard work in Richmond. Maybe we can help get that done a little bit quicker. The Herndon Reston Lions and Leos had their fiftieth anniversary. I'll defer to the mayor on that, but I just, it was very good. And also their hundredth anniversary as well. On Saturday, the Herndon Village Network, we had a thing called Walk Down Memory Lane, in which we had a public outreach to the drivers, people that use services for Herndon Village Network, and volunteers. We had a lot of people, including Mr. Voss showed, and the Fire Department was there. It was really a nice little event, and raised some money while we were at it too, which was a good thing. And then finally, on the consent agenda tonight, is the Herndon Youth Advisory Council. I want to thank the council for your support on that. Briefly, what this is, is back in January, we approached the council in regards to making, basically, a group of high school and middle school students to have access to the government, also get their ideas and input, to make government more accessible to them, and hopefully to everybody else. So I'm very excited about the steps on that, so I just want to thank everybody for that. And that's all I have tonight, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Cunningham.
Thank you. If you haven't had a chance to experience Third Thursday, you'll get a chance day after tomorrow. This Thursday, the fifteenth, will be our third inaugural Third Thursday, so take a walk around. You'll be out in the morning, hopefully at the farmer's market, and we'll see you in the evening for Third Thursday.
Thank you. Ms. Friedrichs.
In addition to that, we have always got some art going on. On June twenty-fourth...
On June twenty-fourth, Slam Allen returns to Herndon. He is an amazing musician, and it should be a sold-out show, so if I were you, I'd get online right away, artspaceherndon.com, and buy tickets for Slam Allen. He's amazing. Thank you. Ms. Olem.
Thank you. Right now, going on at, next stop theater is Urantown, so if you don't have your tickets yet, check it out. I'm planning to go this week. Father's Day is coming up on Sunday. If you're fortunate enough to still have your dad, or grandfather, uncles, husbands, do something nice for them. And Gracie was in the audience, my mom, but she was taken home by some of the other folks that wanted to go out with her. And she's here to help me celebrate my son's twenty-fifth birthday coming up on the twenty-second. You want to see Gracie, please give me a call. She's booking up.
Her dance card is full. Vice Mayor.
No comment tonight.
Thank you. I just wanted to, we haven't had a public hearing since the Herndon Festival, and I want to congratulate staff on an excellent festival. Mr. Town Manager, good job on the weather, it's never been better. But it was a very successful festival, and it's kudos to all the volunteers and staff that have worked really hard to make that happen. I also wanted to mention the Herndon Patriotic Challenge. The town has again joined with the Herndon Chamber to sponsor the 2017 Patriotic Challenges, or Challenge, where businesses in town are encouraged to get their red, white, and blue on, and hang up decorations and observance of Independence Day from June nineteenth until July seventh. Entries are due by Friday, June sixteenth. Winners are from several different categories, most creative, most patriotic. And they will be, the winners will be announced at the July seventh, Friday Night Live, and you can go to the town's website for details, or the town clerk's office can give you additional information on that. This brings us to comments from the audience. This is the portion of the agenda where anyone can come forward and speak for up to three minutes about any item that is not one of our public hearing items. But first, I would like to recognize Delegate Jennifer Boyzko, who has a presentation for us this evening.
Thank you so much. I feel like I've been up here a lot tonight. Tonight, I wanted to recognize a former colleague of yours, Stephen L. Mitchell. If you, if you want to come down while I...
He's hiding over behind the pole. You can take the shortcut. Come on down. We're casual here.
This is a House joint resolution that was agreed to by the House of Delegates on February seventeenth, and agreed to by the Senate February twenty-second, sponsored by me and State Senator Jennifer Wexton. And so if you would not mind, I'll read it out, if that would be okay?
Sure.
Okay. Whereas Stephen L. Mitchell provided able leadership to the residents of Herndon as a member of the Herndon Town Council from 2014 to 2016. And whereas a lifelong resident of Herndon, Stephen Mitchell gave his time, knowledge, and expertise to serve the town and its citizens, as he represented the town as a member of the Interjurisdictional Committee. And whereas Stephen Mitchell's fluency in the Spanish language, which he gained through education, teaching, and experience, was a great asset to the Herndon Town Council, helping to ensure that all residents had a voice in local government. And whereas during his time on the Herndon Town Council, Stephen Mitchell was instrumental in numerous town projects and improvements, including the Herndon Metro Rail Station area planning projects, and the town's purchase of privately-owned land to facilitate the downtown redevelopment project. And whereas Stephen Mitchell also oversaw numerous road and intersection projects, such as those on Station Street, Park Avenue, Monroe Street, Herndon Parkway and Van Buren Street, as well as the development of Junction Square and the historic downtown streetscape. And whereas during Stephen Mitchell's tenure, the Herndon Town Council implemented lighting on the Washington and Old Dominion Trail, historic marker and gateway signs, automated water meter reading, and the elimination of the physical town vehicle decal, and the designation of Veterans Day as a town holiday. And whereas Stephen Mitchell will seek new opportunities to serve the community after completing his loyal and dedicated service to his fellow residents as a member of the Herndon Town Council, now therefore be it resolved by the House of Delegates and the Senate concurring that the General Assembly hereby commend Stephen L. Mitchell for his service as a member of the Herndon Town Council, and be it resolved further that the Clerk of the House of Delegates prepare a copy of this resolution for presentation to Stephen L. Mitchell as an expression of the General Assembly's admiration for his dedicated service and many contributions to the Herndon community.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Did you have a speech?
No speech.
We'll do anything to get you to come back on Tuesdays. You see, we keep doing this.
I just wanted to thank Delegate Boyzko and Senator Wexton for doing this. I truly appreciate it. Glad to see it passed, so that was great.
It was iffy. It was iffy.
Yes, thank you again, very much. Really happy to be here this Tuesday, too. I didn't realize it was LGBTQ plus. I'm happy to be here for that, no matter what, so I got lucky. And thank you for the actions I allowed.
actions that allowed me to be the lucky guy tonight. So thank you all again, thank you for your time, thank you for your service, thank you for your service, your service, your service.
You get a car, and you get a car.
You guys get it. But again, last time I stood up here, I walked away, and I was like, dang it, I should have showed more gratitude towards the staff, and I got nervous, so I'm getting my second at bat here, and thank you to the staff, both that are currently still sitting, that were sitting, and truly from the depths of my heart, it was a drink it from a fire hose for a while, so thank you again.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Delegate Boyzko. So again, this is the opportunity for anyone to come forward and speak on any item that's not listed as a public hearing item. You have up to three minutes up to speak. Please state your name and address for the record, and the green light will come on when you begin speaking, and when the red light comes on, please wrap up. Is there anyone that would like to come forward and speak on any item that's not a public hearing item? Okay, seeing none, that will bring us right to our first public hearing, which is Ordinance 17011, to amend the fiscal year 2017 adopted budget to implement a benefit adjustment pertaining to the police supplemental health care stipend benefit. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing and recognize Bill Ashton, our acting town manager, for the staff report. Mr. Ashton?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. In a few minutes, you're going to consider an action to repeal Ordinance 03025, which will end the police supplemental health care stipend benefit. This benefit is an assistance program structured in a manner where the town sets aside money based on 1% of an active officer's salary and pays a monthly assistance stipend to police retirees. When the original ordinance was adopted, a change was made to the town's contribution to an officer's supplemental retirement trust fund account from 4% to 3%, with 1% set aside to start paying into this benefit. This program was started in FY 2004, and is projected to be unsustainable by the 2022-2023 timeframe. Because of this unsustainability, earlier this year, the town engaged a benefits attorney to examine this assistance benefit. Part of this analysis was an actuarial analysis, which I want to comment is the first one ever conducted for this program. Based on the advice provided by the benefits attorney and the actuarial, the committee charged with the management of this benefit has recommended that the benefit be terminated at the end of this fiscal year. With a very narrow exception, all money in the program's account belongs to the town, and the town has no legal obligation to disperse any money, with the exception of that one narrow exception. When legal counsel and staff briefed you on this matter, council made it clear to me that although no legal obligation existed, you felt an obligation to end this program in a moral and fiscally responsible way. To end, to this end, the action before you right now is a budget adjustment to provide additional resources needed to move into each active officer supplemental trust fund account, the 1% the town has contributed to the health care stipend over the course of that officer's career since 2004. This was based on the actuarials computation of what that 1% would have looked like. This money will be placed in each officer's supplemental retirement trust fund account, and that will be tax-free. The money coming from the $300,000 budgetary increase will be from our BPole estimates, we want to raise those by 300,000. Actual receipts of BPole are greater than 300,000 at this time. At this time, I'm also available for your questions. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Questions from the council? Okay, thank you, sir. So this is a public hearing, so we'll call on comments from the audience. Just like before, you have up to three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. When the red light comes on, please wrap up. Is there anyone that would like to come forward and speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Move to council level for discussion and action. Ms. Cunningham?
Madam Mayor, I'll move Ordinance 17011.
Okay, we have a motion made by Councilmember Cunningham, seconded by Councilmember Olem. Discussion on the motion.
This was a really tough, tough one to work through. We, the town took a lot of steps to ensure that the officers that would be, the officers are currently employed that would be impacted would be made whole. It was our biggest, biggest concern, is that we felt obligated to honor a promise. We didn't make that promise, but it's still a promise the town has made of its staff, and we uphold those promises. So it does affect future hires, but we felt very strongly that we needed to protect the integrity of the promise that was made to our staff, and, but also balancing the needs of fiscal responsibility to our taxpayers. And so we did take the extraordinary step of doing the actuarial study and consulting with the benefits attorney. We really turned this one upside down to make sure that we were being as fair as possible. And so it's a difficult decision, but it does put, it does make currently impacted staff whole, and it does protect our residential taxpayer base in the future, so I'm comfortable with the decision that's before us tonight. Thank you.
Ms. Olem, followed by Mr. McKenna.
Yes, and I really appreciate all the work that our staff, especially our chief of police, has put in a lot of time and energy in this, as well as our attorney, our acting town manager, and numerous other staff, as well as consultants that you've worked with to make sure this got taken care of as fairly and equitable as possible. So thank you for all the work everyone put in this.
Thank you. Mr. McKenna?
Yeah, I want to also commend staff on this. This is something actually no, I'm pretty knowledgeable about. I was actually, I worked in benefits for many years. In fact, my federal license is still on file, you can check it at 4202184, in regards to understanding these kinds of things, and I just want to thank the staff for their proactive measures on this, because again, many things, you know, we have to make sure that we're spending our money wisely. Obviously, we'll make sure everyone is taken care of, but this was something that needed to be done, and I'm just very proud that it didn't get to a point where it was untenable, and it could have gotten a lot worse, but I really am very proud of everyone and their work, so thank you very much. It was a great job.
Thank you. So are there any other comments? Mr. Davidson? Oh, I'm sorry, followed by the Vice Mayor.
Yes, I rarely just say that I agree with all my council members, and I always try to have something to add, but I will second what my council member, fellow council members have said, and the staff has done a wonderful job keeping the council informed about this. It was a difficult item to tackle in the first place. There were a lot of issues that were economic, some of them were ethical, some of them were moral, and the staff has done a wonderful job on that, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I will just sort of chime in on that as well, because I do want the, both the chief and all of her officers to know how much we support the work that they do, and that they protect and serve the community with such diligence, and we have, I personally, and I feel like our whole council has such great respect for that, so this was a difficult situation to have to make a choice to rectify a program that just, as the town manager said, was not going to be tenable in future years. I think there was the best of intentions when it was put in place, but it's, I appreciate that the staff did recognize the, that it was, that there were challenges to it and that we needed to address it, and again, so much thanks to our acting town manager, to our town attorney, and to the chief for that, for supporting that and making it right, and doing the best we could with the situation. Certainly wasn't a perfect solution, but I think, you know, they showed us all the different variables and the ways we could kind of make it right, and I do feel like we collectively have the best decision in front of us. Thanks.
Thank you. I just want to go on record saying, when this came to light several months back, no one was happy about it. It was really upsetting. We looked into it thoroughly, we had some closed sessions where we got really the nitty-gritty about what situation we had, we were finding ourselves in, and as the acting town manager said, we were not legally required to do anything outside of a very narrow set of former employees, and that did not sit well with the council at all. We didn't feel good about that. We wanted to do something, because we want to stand by our employees, and particularly our police officers, who put themselves out there and, you know, put themselves in possible danger every day, so it was never something that this council considered just saying, okay, well, fine, we're just going to wrap this up. So I am pleased that we were able to find some way to try to do as much of the right thing as possible, and this is a tough and not super happy vote that we're about to take here, but I applaud the staff and thank you for helping us through a very difficult situation as best we could. So if there's no further discussion, I will call the question on the motion, which was made by Councilmember Cunningham, seconded by Councilmember Olem. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries, and the following ordinance goes along with that, this is a general item, Ordinance 17012, to repeal Ordinance 03025, creating a police supplemental health care stipend benefit, and I'll recognize our town attorney, Lisi Yates, for the staff report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and in fact, my description of this item will be only about as long as the title itself. That particular ordinance, 03025, was adopted in 2003 to set aside, as the town manager said, 1% of each Herndon police officer's salary to fund a police percent, a police supplemental health care stipend benefit to retired officers. Prior to 2003, there was a previous ordinance that had been adopted in 1998 that directed this 1% contribution to be made into the active officer supplemental retirement trust fund. The 2003 ordinance changed that. Repeal of the 2003 ordinance that we're asking for tonight will reinstate the provisions of the 1998 ordinance, and as the town manager has indicated, will allow the 1% to proceed on into the accounts, retirement accounts of the officers. So we would ask that you repeal Ordinance 03025.
Thank you. Questions of council for our attorney? Okay, thank you for that. I guess that we will move to council level for discussion and action. I'll entertain a motion. Ms. Olem?
I move that we repeal Ordinance 17-0-12.
Yeah, seconded.
So just to clarify, that the motion on the floor is to pass the ordinance which would repeal Ordinance 03025.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes.
Oh, 25.
We'll make sure we know what we're voting for. Thank you.
Repeal the repeal.
Was that the intention? Okay, thank you. Discussion on the motion, anyone? Ms. Olem?
Yes, as we've all discussed with the previous ordinance, I thank staff for really going over this, because not all of us do this for a living, take care of retirement accounts, so it was a lot of information, and I appreciate all the time and energy and explanations that went into it.
Thank you. And Mr. McKenna, or anyone else? No? Okay, thank you. With that, I will call the question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries, and that brings us to the consent agenda this evening. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move it.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that concludes our agenda this evening. Ms. Olem?
Madam Mayor, seeing no other business, I move we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And we stand adjourned at 8:04 PM. Thank you, everyone.